...recent history, last year Senator Erkhart brought up an anti-discrimination bill that is very concerning to us because it did make it out of committee. And those kinds of bills have been brought up in the past that would then give, that would then say you can't discriminate against somebody because of a sexual preference. You know, we don't have any problem with, you know, saying, "Don't discriminate against somebody because of sex," or "because of religion," or "because of race." But they're trying to make sexual preference a protected class with this kind of anti-discrimination bill. We're very concerned about this and know that there have already been instances in many other states, all the 16 states who have adopted legalized gay marriage have started with an anti-discrimination bill. We've also seen things happen in our schools already, such as in American Fork High School, where a boy came last year to school and said, "Hey, I think I'm a girl today. I want to use the girl bathroom." The girl said, "No." It went all the way to the school board. The school board said, "He can use whatever bathroom he thinks he wants to use." And if the girls don't like that, they can choose not to use the bathroom. This would be a case, like, it would affect bathrooms, all kinds of many issues in our public buildings, in our schools. We do not think a sexual preference makes a person a protected class. And so, we encourage all of you to please do not let this thing get out of committee again. It absolutely must be stopped. I spent a year in England this year, teaching families, trying to help families learn self-government. And what we saw there were schools, public schools, with no stalls in the bathrooms. They were all unisex. Girls and boys, just urinals on one wall, toilets on another, children changing their clothes together in the same classrooms, children learning sex education about masturbation, how to get hypersexualities, stuff like that at age three. These types of things just start to roller coaster into stuff like that. If we could just watch that, that's probably the biggest thing. We are also very concerned about protecting parent rights. So, there's a lot of talk in U.N. and in the world about child rights, which actually end up destroying parents' rights. And every child has a first right of having a parent to teach them and lead them, and we believe that. And if you could please defend that as well. We also are concerned about the caucus changing and would encourage you to vote no on changing the caucus system from the way it is. We feel like it has worked well for a very long time, and the people that are bringing up issues about it are, in essence, popping holes in the system that has served Utah well. Also, if there's any talk of a constitutional convention, which has been talked about in the past, we would urge Utah to vote no. Andereg has come up with a bill, I think it's H.R. 1, for Religious Freedom for Clergy. We would encourage you to vote yes for that. Clergy should be able to choose what kind of marriage ceremony that they would, you know, say that they will do or not, which we think is great. Senate Bill 39, that's going to be coming up, about the homeschool amendment, bringing attention to a homeschool issue that does not exist, and I know it because I'm a homeschooler. This is not even an issue. And if all of a sudden we start making homeschool bills and homeschool legislation, then all of a sudden people start regulating homeschoolers in a way that would be detrimental and create a whole bunch of paperwork and extra money for the state. So, we think that would also be something that if you could please vote no on that. Even though it seems like it's advocating for homeschools, it's drawing attention to homeschoolers in a way that makes the government think that they should regulate homeschoolers, which would be wrong and take away rights from the parents. Also, Andereg is bringing up H.R. 3, which is defunding Obamacare, and we are in favor of defunding Obamacare. Those are some of the main issues that we've been concerned about. I know none of you took notes, but hopefully you've got a really good mind to remember all of those things.
Just a couple of comments. The Utah Legislature cannot defund Obamacare.
Darn.
We have no authority to do that, and so that's pie in the sky. It's a statement, I guess, of our opinion, but it has no legal or practical effect. It won't change anything on the federal level. So, on the Religious Freedom Amendment, there's a question, we of course agree with the ends, with the concerns, but it may not be necessary if we rest on the First Amendment, which is already in existence, which is our free exercise of religion and protection from establishment of religion. That's our bedrock protection. And most legal scholars do not feel like we need anything more than that. If the First Amendment fails us, nothing else is going to help. And so, just a couple of observations.
Thank you.
Generally, I agree with your other concerns and share those concerns.
Now, there was something you mentioned about the Constitutional Convention, which I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards because I think it would probably bore everyone else. But when it comes to the issue of the caucus system, one thing that you should be aware of, I think we all, being products of the caucus system, are supporters of the caucus system. However, we would be foolish not to look at the reality that if Count My Vote makes it onto the ballot, people who have not had the time to understand the caucus system will vote to end it. And it's a very real concern.
What do you mean by vote to end it? And what would that look like? Because my understanding is it would dilute the vote quite significantly.
Yes. I refer to it as the Buy My Vote initiative, because the reality is, if Count My Vote is successful, if it gets the signatures, if it goes on the ballot, it will almost certainly pass. And what that will give us as a state is it will give us primaries. It will give us direct primaries, which are won, not one-on-one, by convincing the representatives elected in neighborhoods, but it will go to mass media. And the winner will be whoever spends the most money, or whoever is the most famous, or whoever has a friendly media. Obviously, I'm generalizing because I'm trying to get through this quickly so we can get to some other questions.
That's my concern, and I don't want that.
But the reality is, we do have a consideration in front of the Senate right now that is not ideal, but it's better than Count My Vote. And the fact of the matter is, as we observe Count My Vote moving forward, if it looks like we are going to be in trouble, then it would be a really good idea for us to put a stopgap in place to prevent a complete...
Restructuring.
Restructuring is a good term for it. I was looking for...
Evisceration.
Selling elected offices.
Do you mean like putting a Plan B up there?
We can discuss this, because I don't want to monopolize this gentleman in the black room.
I'm a voting member of the NRA, and I haven't heard anything about the gun ban lobby that's really active in Utah, and also in Tula County. My father was a businessman here for about 50 years. And I say, "If we could eat gas tax, free up the oil wells in Southern Utah." Make it easy, if people want to sell the sand and ground, we probably don't know this, we got a lot of sand and ground in Salt Lake County. We could lose a couple billion tons of it, not affect us. Make it easier for those guys to get it out, and so businesses are here, not located just outside Tula. If you notice, some of that thing's in the act. The last thing I have is, I hear reports about 10% of the pollution comes from wood burning stoves, and I heard 5% also today. But my real concern is, out of statistics and out of percentages, is that we have a resource of natural game, natural animals, rare animals, and for some reason we cut out 3,000 tags a couple of years ago. We're trying to manage the herds better. But I see the farmers, I see the other guys that have that stuff, they're trying to manage their herds in the same, plus make a living in the farming industry. They're taking the common man out of that scheme, so only any people with wealth can get into those animals. I would like you to look at that. Thank you.
I'm Karen Lee Atkinson, and I'm a businessman's theory, and I represent people with dyslexia. There's a bill this year, and charter schools are asking for kids who have special needs not to live in charter schools. And that really concerns me for two reasons. My son right now is classified special needs because he's dyslexic. His IQ is 125. He is not an unintelligent boy. He needs help right now to learn to read. By the time he's in high school, he won't even know he's dyslexic. He will do Thaddeus, Steve Jobs, Henry Ford, I do on Einstein, are dyslexics. And right now, he's not allowed into his gifted program because he struggles to read.
Who was running that bill?
I didn't write it down.
I can't imagine that bill...
Well, and they're saying they can get around IDA, because that's against IDA, but they're saying they can get around it.
I can't imagine that bill having any support.
It terrifies me, because if you classify these kids that have a few disabilities, you're ignoring everything that they can do. And so, please, please support us. On the dyslexic side, our governor is doing a great job trying to get everyone reading by third grade. We're not running anything this year. Next year, we'll be running some bills on dyslexia. And we're going to get those kids reading. One in five children are dyslexic. It's a spectrum disorder. Some are really dyslexic, like my son, some are really dyslexic. But they're bright kids. They just need to be taught a certain way. And if you want people reading by third grade, maybe hit that 20%. So, we're working with the State Office of Education. We're working, we have a great school district here. We've been working really well with us. We have several schools here in our district that are doing great things for it. But keep that dyslexia in back of your mind, because it's there, and we don't want to lose these brains.
Right here.
I would appreciate a little bit more discussion on the caucus system. You need to know that I was raised, that my father's me, in the caucus system. It's served me well, and I think everyone well for years. But as a mother with five grown children who want to be more involved, and haven't found that the caucus system favors that, and seeing other friends who... And we could go on and on, because there's a zillion different factors, and we can't take away people's freedom to choose one thing over another. But my sense as a dedicated caucus scholar is that we need to take it seriously in terms of what can we do to improve it. And I don't know that you need to speak to this. A million things cross my mind. I've heard people. But I think to just say, "It works well," and it works really well for those of us who don't know, and for those of us who study it out. But I want those five kids to find a way to hear the ones who've studied it out, to be more involved. That has to come partly from them. But what can we do to make this a more all-inclusive process, and to make people feel less excluded? And I know we can't do everything. I'm not asking you to solve everyone's problems. But there has to be opportunities there.
I agree. For your information, as you probably know and have read the paper, the Republican Party officials officially support the caucus system. But there is a large move that do not. And that's the challenges that are out there. I don't know what to tell you, what you should do, other than to do what you've just done and ask to express yourself about how you feel regarding the caucus system. It all comes down to the pain that some people felt when Senator Beto was defeated. And I understand pain. It's not a pleasant thing to lose. But I think the caucus system has served us well. The minority, I'm a Republican, the minority party also likes the caucus system. They've gone on record in supporting their leadership. So, you have a core of more moderate-type former politicians that have been able to gather a lot of support from various corners of the state. But I think the public generally has not made up their mind yet.
You're right.
Yeah. So, that's, I don't know if that's any information that is earth-shaking, but...
I appreciate your perspective.
Hi, my name's Cliff Haynes. I'm asking these questions on behalf of Utah. And your teachers and your local principals get to decide how it's used in your schools. I serve on a community council as a co-chair for Willow Elementary. We get about $48,000 a year. We have hired encore aides to provide professional learning communities, and our test scores have gone up 10% in three years, across all three metrics. So, Senator Thatcher, you did mention you are concerned about school safety. That is also brought up in our issue. I love the idea that I will be speaking more about the driver's license. That is something that community councils could easily fund if we had the money. So, I'm asking you guys to, it might be a contentious issue to where perhaps people perceive their taxes are going up. And honestly, I tried to read the bill, I could not understand it. But once again, if it helps us bring more money to the schools, and if it's an item to where perhaps a little bit of expense might be passed on the consumer, the PTA would like that, and I as an individual community council member would definitely like to see additional $20 million into our communities. Thank you.
Quick question I had for Representative Mills. All of you talked about budget, and I understand that's a big concern. You mentioned deep cleaning the budget. Where would you like to see the surplus go? Where would you like to see some cuts, just from personal standpoint?
I'd like to see more go into education. I think teachers and public employees haven't seen a good pay increase for many, many years. The increase they typically receive is a half percent or 1%, which is barely enough to cover their increase in their medical care, their health care plan, their retirement. And it's been a long time since they had a healthy increase. By infusing more money in, basically, as Senator Atkinson mentioned, we have such a large growth every year that any increase we get in funding is consumed, just covering the growth. And so, if we could get some more money, that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see more money go into our infrastructure, so we can improve our roads, our highways. As far as cuts, you know, that's tough. Everybody's holding on to something. And I'm hoping that as we go through this careful process to begin this session, we can find some areas, because we can talk to the directors and their budget people and analyze each individual program and ask them, "Is this something you need? Or is this something that you maybe could combine or reduce? Is there some way we could save money somewhere in your budget?" And we'll be looking for those savings.
So, you said you're going to be talking to the individual heads of department, saying which programs can be consolidated?
Correct. Correct. They each come before the appropriations committees. We all sit on one or more appropriations subcommittees. And they come in to defend their budget. We are there to ask questions, and we're going to examine individual programs. And so, this is the chance we have to identify areas of saving that we can.
And one final, hopefully, quick question on education funding. What is the funding going towards Common Core looking like? What's the stand-up at? How much funding of the new funding go into education? Would go towards Common Core? And what's your stance on that?
I don't know that we have any specific amount set aside for Common Core. It's just money that goes into instruction. And the state school board adopted Common Core, setting forth standards, their benchmarks for learning. It doesn't necessarily dictate how we achieve those. It doesn't cover curriculum necessarily on how we achieve those standards, but it sets standards, higher standards. And I'm not aware of any figure in the budget that is targeted toward what we call Common Core or Utah Core. It's just the curriculum standards that the money goes to.
Tom Pointer. How we fund education is mostly through income taxes. All of your income taxes that people pay go into the education as a whole, generally. So, education has a solid stream of dollars out of the education funds, which is basically what I'm thinking about. All the rest of the state government is funded out of the general fund, sales tax, permanent health, access to... And so, when you have a strong economy, deferment, paying higher taxes, that's why the governor keeps saying, "Let's have a strong economy." Because the bottom line is more tax dollars for directly to education by law, not because it's not his place to put it, it's because it's by law that that happens. So, economy is the key, that all of, most of the problems that we have relative to funding. Hope our economy continues to strengthen. It's kind of on a rocky path, but it seems... But a lot of people aren't aware, and have worried, their tax dollars being built.
Tom Pointer, I live in Tula City. I just, what power, pressure can you bring to bear as state representatives to the federal government to assure that the payment in lieu of tax money gets taken care of? There's nothing, I mean, if they're not going to pay us that payment in lieu of tax money, I want the ground.
Agreed.
I want it now.
We've worked with a lot of states to address that issue. It's not just, you know, Utah, obviously. We've talked to our congressional delegation, very well aware of the impact it will have. But you're right, we are a hundred and forty. I think at some point, they're going to see that the states have to take control. We've got to reverse. The federal government's a creature of the states, not vice versa. We've got to reverse that. That's a good way to end it. You can't pass law through regulation. That's going to be more and more prevalent. That's just wrong. Congress has to quit writing the bills, say, "Okay, well, let the bureaucrats figure out how to implement it." That's where the wheels come off, right there. Senator Belling, I had a very heated conversation about that about three months ago. He said, "Senator, if you pass a bill, your dorm will better know the intent, what's going to happen. If you don't, don't pass it." But yeah, we're aware of that hot issue, and everything we can.
I might add one thought to that question. Payment in lieu of taxes came about because these western states felt cheated, basically. If you look at ownership of land, if you start on the east and come west, you'll find that most eastern states have very little federal-owned land. And it's the land that generates property taxes, which go also into whatever the governing body chooses to have it go. But as you come west, and more and more land is owned by the federal government, and they pay no taxes, but they came out with this hilt to quiet it. But hilt is still unfair. Even if they paid it for the full extent that they have, it's not the same as if the lands were taxed as your property is taxed. And federal lands, we can't tax them. So, there's a lot of it in Utah. What is it, 70% of the state roughly is federally owned? So, there's our challenge. I know that a lot of different ideas have come up in the last two or three years. Representative Rob Bishop is a strong advocate for getting local ownership of federal lands. And as a former teacher, he has method to his madness. You can see the value of that for education as well. So, it's a big, big deal.
Sorry, I need to stand up, because I'm really short and I can't really see you right. But first, my name is Cindy Vincent. I've lived in Tula County now for only about six months. I'm not new to Utah, but we are new here. We really like it here. And I want to say that I'm really impressed that you're up here. I think that speaks a lot about how you feel about us as your citizens here. I have a couple of things that I wanted to address. One, you already brought up, so I was really happy about that. But my main concern tonight is about the Common Core. And I do realize that that's not technically your jurisdiction, and that's something that the state school board kind of takes care of. My problem, I have a lot of problems, and I could go on for three hours, and I won't worry you with that. But my biggest concern right now is that the state school board does not listen to the citizens of Utah about their concerns about the Common Core. Letter after letter after letter has been written to them, and they disregard us. They treat us as though we are misinformed. They tell the public we're misinformed. 8,000 residents, over 8,000 residents of the state have signed petitions saying, "We are very concerned about this Common Core," and all of the things that are being attached to it, like the data tractors and testing and all of that, all of that stuff. My concern, and what I would like you guys to look into, is I found that I think that the big problem, and the reason why the state school board doesn't listen to us, is because we don't elect them. They are appointed by the governor, and the governor is highly supportive of Common Core.
That's not entirely accurate.
Well, he appoints a body of people, and then we get to elect from them.
But he does nominate, he does nominate the people that go on the ballot, but there is a question.
Exactly. So, everybody that he nominates is going, excuse me, I'm a little nervous today, but everyone, but everyone that he nominates is obviously going to be a part of what his vision is, and he's got a whole vision lined out, and I've read it. So, my concern is, how do we get the state school board to listen to us when they disregard us, tell us that we're uneducated? And I can tell you that I've read 300-page documents about this. I've read meetings, I've read minutes, and I don't appreciate being called uninformed about such things. And I really wish that they would be more accountable to the public, because they are our children. I pulled my kids out of public school. I homeschool. I will not send my kids to school under those conditions. So, I guess that's my question for you, is how do you feel about the state school board, how they're elected? What can we do as citizens to get them to listen to us? I'm not saying that we have to change Common Core and get rid of it. I would love that. But I would at least want them to be genuinely concerned about what we think. And the other concern I have is also kind of related to that. I do homeschool, but I partner with a charter school that does distance learning. And my oldest son is in second grade, and next year will be in third grade, and will be subjected to the new standardized tests that are coming out. The school that I, that we partner with, has told us that they would be supportive of us opting out of those tests. But I also know that by doing so, I hurt that school, because they will be graded and given a zero for my child. And I think that that method is unfair, and I would also like that to be addressed, and how we go about the standardized testing, how that affects schools. Because that doesn't just affect that charter school, it affects all the schools, and all the parents, and all the public schools. You're also measuring teachers based on test scores, which I also think is unfair, because I feel like teaching is an art and not a science that can be scientifically measured. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't be able to get rid of a teacher if they're performing really poorly, but I don't think that standardized tests, although even though it may be minimal, minimal in what they're measuring against, I don't feel like that should be something that they measure for their performance at all. Not that's...
You know, you bring up a really good point, and that is, what is the value of the state Board of Education? We have local boards of education that are close to you folks, that you can talk to, discuss, complain, or do whatever.
And that's the problem. We can go to our local board, and they can't do anything. They say that their hands are tied. We go to the state board, and they don't listen.
Well, and that's what I'm getting, is that my good friend, Rob Bishop, again, I'm going to call him, he ran some legislation as a school teacher to do away with the state Board of Education, because he can find no absolute value to it in terms of education. And I tend to agree. It was created by our state constitution. When the constitution was written, it wrote in, "State Board of Education." But I don't know that it was clearly envisioned as to what our education system faces today. And I think it's redundant, frankly. I just think that we could do a much better job at the local level, and our local boards of education generally do a pretty nice job. And our local boards of education generally do a pretty nice job.
Agreed.
So, what my, my question then is, what do we do? Because there's, is there anything that is proposed this year in all of legislation? And I feel like it's super important and very, a lot of people are very, very concerned about this. So, would you be willing to look into that and propose something to be done?
It's been discussed in the House the last couple of years. It wasn't brought based on, I think that's changing, simply based on what we've discussed tonight. It's very evident that, on account, they're just not, do whatever they want. And I think it's time that, you know, every elected official, whatever, has to be accountable somewhat. And I just don't believe we are. Thank you.
We had one, one kind of funny, funny element to this, I think it was funny anyway. We had a meeting with the state board of education and those of the conservative leadership and the Senate. And at the end of the meeting, I asked the longest standing member of the state school board, "What is your job?" "What's your job?" He was a member of the school board. And he totally went silent. And he says, "I'll get back with you on that." And I have not yet heard from him. Senator, is that any policy? No.
All right. Maybe this question for Senator Knutson, of course, with the Affordable Care Act, some of us are not too happy with it, but it probably will extend services to people in the community and services. Of course, one of the things President Obama said back in, I think, two thousand nine, in this one neighbor having debates, he says that the thing should be between patient and the provider, not insurance. Now, how it is, your business, if you understand this perfectly well, probably at least more so than if, of course, Doug is in medical, I think so, he's involved in it too, but Dr. Bloosport, you know that when it comes to village medical insurance companies, they're the ones that's got the upper hand. And somehow back in nineteen seventy seven, they got the right to tell us what to do, what not to do, and say, "Well, this is what the fee should be. They dictate the fees. Make one deal with me and one with you and be side by side, whatever." But of course, ATA said, and it's from Utah, on the next page, is working on a thing to get Congress maybe to do something about it. How can we support this on a local level and get you people, I'm not sure if you're in Congress, but maybe you could expand, tell a little bit more about it, what's happening, how we can support that.
You know, one of, one of the sad things that I, and I'm sure you're well aware of it, is that when that bill was being discussed in Congress, most members of Congress had never seen it or even had staff see it. They're so busy that their staff meets it, brings out the important points that legislators should know. And that's how most legislators go. But in this case, even the lady who was the Speaker of the House at the time, that said, "Basically, we've got to pass this legislation so that we'll understand what's in it." That's kind of a backward way of adopting legislation. We think you'd want to know about it. First, before you vote for it, there are still many legislators who are not sure of what's in it. And little by little, we're getting more and more information. I will give the president this, that I do believe that he cares about people. I think he's a caring person. And I think that his intent was probably good. But this thing, and you mentioned it, has become a heyday for the insurance. And that's why when I said and promised you, "You can keep your doctor or you can keep the policy that you now have," was a bunch of booing. Because the insurance companies didn't write that into the law. I mean, I've been up there on the Hill long enough to know the power of insurance companies. They are very powerful, you know, on a national level. And why are they powerful? Because they have a lot, who builds all the big buildings in the world?
Insurance companies, and they donate by, by some of the legislatures or do, too often, I think this is what happens on a national level or to many of our, in funding. And of course, you and I, we can't have that kind of problem.
It's, it's very challenging. The best thing you can do is to share your own experiences with it, with others. Get enough people up in the ranks. It's amazing what folks can do.
Well, so, so long, I think people are tired of the support ATA on, you know, state level. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
All right, we've got one more question here at the back. And before we get to that, did anybody else have questions? I can take one more than that if you guys want, or we can round it up.
Toby, I missed you.
Oh, what's up?
I didn't get to say hello.
I also heard one of my, first, first, I'm certified. My name is Kami Perkins. I'm here speaking as a citizen of Tuolumne City, but I'm also here speaking as a professional human resource director for Tuolumne City. So, the first reason that I came was to support the comments on the dyslexia issues that are being presented to you. I fortunately am blessed to have a child also who fights that same challenge and a stereotype within the school district, within the school system. And they're making great strides, but you're going to start to see a lot more movement and attention brought to this issue through not only legislation, but general awareness. And we are hopeful that it will finally be recognized as a true disability so that our children can afford the equal protection that they need in order to have equal access to education. So, that was covered by the ladies in the front, so thank you. The other thing that I wanted to talk to, I'm probably in the minority here, but I am one that I am in support of legislation that does protect people who may not share my same family status or my same family beliefs. I believe in equal protection for all of my employees regardless of what their sexual orientation is. So, I'm going to throw that out in the table and just let you know that there are people, even though I don't share those same beliefs, I do believe in the equal protection and would be supportive of legislation. The last reason that I'm standing is I wanted to just bring to your attention an issue that is maybe not to the point where it's reaching a legislative issue, but I've made it my personal agenda and mission, Mr. Sagers is aware of this, to effect change that is being implemented through the Utah retirement system. Recently, you guys are aware, they've created a new tier two program and we have this legislation change that impacted the double dippers, the post-retiree rehires. And there are some issues that are starting to surface now as times going by and the state is implementing those regulations. Recently, they've come out with an opinion and sent to us as employers that states that any volunteer for a government agency that is receiving any sort of an allowance or a stipend is subject to the same separation requirements and post-reemployment or post-revolunteer rules as if they were an employee. And I want to stand before you and let you know that you're going to hear from me, you're going to hear from an active movement, whether we need to bring it to the legislature or not. But I am firmly against anything that is going to restrict the spirit of volunteerism within our communities. I believe that the civic and the charitable and humanitarian purpose in our communities needs to be preserved and our retirees are precisely that group that brings and gives back to our communities. In Tuolumne City as a whole, we're fortunate to have a full-time volunteer fire department. On that fire department, there are certain individuals who we do pay a stipend to. It's minor, it is cheap, it is the best value that these taxpayers have for right now the gentlemen that provide that service in our community. And what this rule does is it requires them to quit the police department before they can retire, or the fire department before they can retire as a school district employee. It requires them to wait out after they quit the six month time period before they can come back and volunteer if they are to receive any sort of a stipend. So, I'm bringing that to your attention more as an awareness because you're here. Mr. Sagers is on board with me and I would like to thank you for that.
Absolutely.
They did call me on Friday and said that whether it's five dollars or seven thousand dollars, a stipend is a stipend. And I have asked them to identify where that is, if it's being an administrative rule that they've implemented or something in the law that they have interpreted. And so, I wanted to stand before you and just bring awareness to that issue and ask for your support to preserve our volunteers in our communities, even if they're retirees from the school district, the county, or another government entity. Thank you for your service in here tonight.
Thanks, Kami. Keep us posted, please.
What's that?
Keep us posted.
I've got your email.
Let's redo it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question from Dave McCall.
Good evening. I think I've met most of you. My name is Dave McCall and I just had two quick questions. It's not questions, I just want to throw two things at you. One of them, you mentioned about the tax, possibly raising gas tax, whatever. Maybe if we could look at, instead of doing the, raising the gas tax again for Interstate fifteen and Interstate eighty, and I know you mentioned, I think you did mention, that mentioned, we have a lot of gravel in Tuolumne County and they take it and go back to Salt Lake where they fill their gas tanks up. We're losing that. Well, the state as a whole is losing money that way. If we were to just possibly put toll roads on Interstate eighty and Interstate fifteen, granted, I would be paying tolls as well, but that's not the point. The point would be, we could use the money from the toll roads to build the roads and maintain the roads, thus free money to go back into education that you were speaking of a minute, to put more money back in education. So, it is just a win-win situation. It happens all the time back east, it happens out west. And you do it, you put a toll on the road for a specific period of time. If you want to, and you want to redo the bridges on, say, Interstate fifteen from Roy to Provo, all those bridges need to be replaced. You put a toll on the road and put a ten, fifteen year period on it and you use that money to replace those, those bridges. It automatically pays you money. It's fifteen, twenty-five cents, depending on how much it is, but a toll road would actually work. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, the legislation has looked into that once before. How far it got, I don't know, but I know it's been up there before. But I really think if you did a little more research, toll roads would work. The other thing would be on the Clear Care Act, and I know we've talked to a couple of you before about increasing the UTA in Tuolumne and Brantville. And I know, and thank you for getting a member in Tuolumne, Tuolumne County, on that board. But I really wish we could get another member on that board and possibly meet with UTA to give, to increase the amount of UTA traffic to Tuolumne and Brantville and Stansbury, which would actually cut down on profit. The motor is going in. I know my wife rides the bus all the time, but right now she can't ride the bus because of the time and people that work with her can't ride the bus because of the time. And they have a three or four hour gap in between one bus to the next bus, thus they would have to stay in Salt Lake a long period of time. And I know they're not the only one, it's a lot of Tuolans that are, obviously she's shaking her, and I know she were the only one. It's a lot of people in Tuolumne, Stansburg is that way. Their schedule don't lead up with the way that they work. But it's just two ideas, don't worry.
I might just add to your thoughts on the toll. You're absolutely right. Legislature has been working with this over the last several years. In fact, we had a group that went down to Texas. Texas is probably the premier state in terms of toll road development. And most of the toll roads are built by private companies and they will own the toll road until it's paid for and that transfers to the state. But that's allowed them to free up a lot of money that had been dedicated to roads to do other things, like you say, education, or whatever else you might think of. So, I think the toll road does have some merits. And like I said, we have been looking at that, like all procedures, pros and cons.
Senator Thatcher, you have something to announce?
Yeah, I just, real quick, I was hoping that everybody would take a minute and get out their smartphones. Unless it died and then you're excused. But if you get out your phones, there's a website that you should all be familiar with. And so, go ahead and type in right now LE, which is short for Legislature, le dot utah dot gov. And if you go to le dot utah dot gov, at the very bottom of the page, there's a spot that says, "Who represents me?" If you're not sure whose district you're in, you type your address in there and it will tell you which of us represent you. Don't let that prevent you from looking up the rest of us and calling and hassling us. That's kind of our job. On that website, you can find our contact information. I list my cell phone, some of the other legislators do as well. You can find our email addresses there. You can find a list of every bill that's being proposed. You can find a list of each bill being proposed by each one of us. You can find committees that will be discussing things you care about with links where you can listen in if you can't come up to the Capitol and watch us. So, if you'll all bookmark le dot utah dot gov, it is probably the best way to stay informed on what's happening legislatively. And again, my cell phone number is there, so if you ever have any questions, if you ever need anything, obviously session is crazy and I can't always take calls, but that phone number is there year round.
I'd like to quickly thank our representatives. I know that with the legislative session coming up so soon, it's a tremendous sacrifice for you guys to be here while you're preparing for that. And once again, I'd like to thank everybody that's come out here today. It's through active citizens that America lives and breathes. And I want to thank all of you for being active citizens and voicing your opinions and asking questions to our representatives. So, thank you very much and I hope you all have a great night.